Okay, good evening. I'd like at this time to call to order this regular business meeting of the Stevensville City Council here on this Tuesday, February 4th at 5:30, and welcome everybody here this evening. And if everybody's ready to, for a cold couple of days into this week, winter is still with us. We've got a full agenda tonight, a lot of, a lot of report updates, and then some decisions later on in the meeting, so without any further delay, I'll just go ahead and move to the second agenda item, which is the Citizens General Discussion, and see if anybody would have any issues they'd like to bring forward to the council tonight. Just come forward and state your name and your address for the council.
All right. My name is Marcus Cook, and I live at 2251 West Lingleville Road here in Stevensville. And I just want to say thank you, Mayor, for inviting me here to speak. My name is Marcus Cook, and I work for the E. Rath County Community Coalition. It's a new coalition formed here, started in September. Our main focus is to reduce underage drinking in E. Rath County. And, you know, it's, that's a big problem across the US, and it's, whenever I conducted a needs assessment, it was the biggest problem here in E. Rath County. You know, from prescription drugs, marijuana, alcohol, underage drinking was the biggest. Just to give you a couple of quick numbers, the last Texas school survey data, which was done in 2012, elementary school students from, that's first to sixth grade, nineteen percent have had alcohol in their lifetime, and alcohol in the past school year is twelve percent. That's first to sixth grade. Secondary school students that have had alcohol in their lifetime is sixty-five percent, and alcohol in the past month is thirty-six percent, which is eleven percent higher than the state average of twenty-five. My, my goal and my job is to, one reason that our coalition has been able to form so quickly and be effective is that we have such great community with people that care. My job is to gather those people up and move forward as a unit, and one of those people is Kevin Miles, he's our president, he's just gonna say a quick word real quick.
Kevin Miles, I'm 1437 Oakwood Drive, and this is very passionate to me about the students of this area, and we as a community, we're above the national average for underage drinking here in E. Rath County, and we just have a community that comes together for students. And what we come to you tonight and just ask, for us just to partner together to combat this before it gets out of hand, and I would, we just ask you to look at what you can offer, not money, but we need, we need support, we need help, and partner with different organizations in town, and different groups, and how we can help students just make wise decisions without the influence of drugs or alcohol in their system. So it's a great need, and I just ask that you give support, and if you're interested in joining our group, just call Marcus at Star Council, and he'll get you signed up.
Okay, thank you. The council got any questions? All right, thank you both very much for, for that presentation, and Star Council on substance abuse, Mr. Marcus Cook. Y'all give him a call or get in contact if you're interested in, in participating, so thanks, guys.
There's a dozen cards on the table over there.
Okay, great, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. All right, the, the next item on the agenda is the Comprehensive Annual Financial Report, and we've got Mr. Louis Crane here tonight from Rutledge Crane &amp; Company to give us a rundown, so.
Mayor, members of the city council, city officials, citizens, it's a pleasure to be here. We used to do your audit up until about twelve or thirteen years ago, and I've forgotten what an absolute pleasure it is to be in Stevensville. I've told your city manager we may have to extend your audit for two to three weeks because of the increase in the number of restaurants. And that's usually the way we figure out how long we're gonna be where we're auditing. We're working down in Lockhart now, if you like barbecue, it's the best place in Texas, but you can't eat barbecue for three weeks in a row. Getting on to your financial statements, let me start out by saying, we found no material weaknesses in your internal control, we had no reportable conditions, or either, we had one or two suggestions which we made to the city staff. Overall, you had a very good financial year. If you look on page fifty-one, it's a budget comparison of your general fund, and you'll notice that you added half a million dollars to your reserves, although you had budgeted to go into the reserves. And it's always good when you're able to bring in more revenue than you budgeted, but I always call that luck, because you have very little control over your revenue. But when you do an equal offset with your expenditures, you do have control over that. And I always like to commend the council for the guidance and the staff for the work when you can come in seven, eight hundred thousand dollars less than what you had budgeted to expend. That shows the kind of control that you need in this time of economic stress we've had over the last four or five years. I know we're better off here in Texas, but there are areas we audit down in South Texas where they're not as well off as we are up here, and they really have had to knock field possessions and do some other things. So you're blessed with the, with the amount of revenues that you have brought in, the reserves you've built. If you go with me for a moment over your water and sewer, I also want to point that out, that's on page twenty-five. I know your general fund is your primary operating, but the water and sewer is important, and we added over a million dollars to our reserves. It's always a little tricky with water and sewer, because in a dry year, we'll make money, in a wet year, we'll lose money, and we hope over the period of time that averages out. So it's a little harder to do, but we did make it there, we also made it in our stormwater drainage. The only place where we lost a little bit was in our airport fund, and that's primarily from depreciation, so we had no actual cash out. So overall, we had an excellent financial year, and it's a pleasure to be associated with this kind of city. I know you just have your reports, and if there are any questions I could answer, I'd be happy to. After you've had time to go through them, if you have a question, if the city manager or the fire director give me a call, I'd be happy to address anything you might have a question on.
Okay.
And I just want to say once again, it's a real pleasure to be here.
All right, thank you, Mr. Crane. Any, any questions, Mr. Savin?
Considering the cat, fund balance that we have after the audit, compare us to other cities that you do work with, compared to total budget, operating reserves, how we stand?
One of the things I, I found out, this is probably fifteen years ago, I had a, I know some of you probably remember Don Davis, I had a really strong conversation with Don, because he's a younger man, I couldn't understand why you had such a strong reserve in your general fund and your water and sewer fund, and he explained to me the Pluxy River situation, or your Pluxy water rights. And I realized that the city was actually planning some distance into the future, because I'd never seen a city that had a hundred percent of expenditures in their fund balance, and the reason, you knew you were going into a time when you needed, and I understand we successfully passed through that. Your reserves are strong, we audited City of Rockwall, they're a little bit stronger, but they're in a strange situation where they sit east of Dallas, they, they can't help but stick their hand out to wind up pulling money. I, that area has grown wildly, Rowlett, we audited Wiley, Sexy, all those areas have just grown tremendously, they've had a little bit of a slowdown, but they've got problems that are developing that you're not gonna have, because you plant, they grow so fast that they, they get, like Arlington, which is where I'm from, is you outgrow your infrastructure. And back in the eighties, we had some severe problems, if you lived south of I-20, you couldn't have a lawn, because they couldn't get water to you to water your lawn. So you're, you're, I would say you're very strong, but I would want you to be there, and I know that the city of Stevensville plans ahead, so I know you have a purpose in doing that.
From what you've seen, though, most fund balances that are, large fund balances are due to growth in the economy.
Yes, what we always recommend, and this is a recommendation from the Government of Finance Officers Association, is that you try to keep a minimum of twenty-five percent, which amounts to ninety days in your general fund. And the reason for that, and a lot of people found it out when we, the old story used to be Hurricane Andrew, and then we had the one that went ashore in New Orleans, and some of the other problems we've had, and recently up on the northeast coast, is that if you don't have enough to keep your city running for ninety days, it takes a long time for the feds to get some assistance to you. Meantime, you still have to pay your employees, you still have to pay your vendors if you're gonna have things to repair roads and do things of that nature, so as a minimum, we always recommend ninety percent or a quarter, which is ninety days. I know if you get about fifty percent, I start questioning it, because you're not in the business to make a profit, you know, this is a city, we're not trying to pay a dividend down the road or something. But you can, such as when they were building up with the problem with the water rights, get a hundred percent of your fund balance, and it may not be enough. So you know what you're looking at five and ten years out, and as long as you keep it about twenty-five percent, I wouldn't criticize you, and neither would anyone at the GFOA.
And so that's, that's against general fund balance, that's, that's operating budget, not reserve for water, sewer, et cetera, so ninety days for us would be how much?
Yeah, the water and sewer, I would re-
Is a separate fund?
Yeah, I would recommend the same type thing, if you removed the depreciation from your capital, because your capital, you've got to acquire that, you expend it over a long period of time, and it's a separate animal. And the water and sewer fund, you're looking at that, but you also have sorries in water and sewer funds, you have things that are consumed, just like they are in the general fund, so you need ninety days to cover that sort of cash flow, as far as your system goes, unless you have, need some major repairs, you, you know, it will continue to depreciate on out until you, you get it repaired. So it's a little bit different, but yours are fairly strong. But then again, it's primarily composed of your investment in your capital assets.
So right now, our seven million dollars worth of fund balance, I guess it's October fourth, seven, one point one million dollars in cash reserves for general fund, right? Is that what, is what this is saying?
Yes.
Okay, so that is, that's compared then to what part of our budget, to the operating budget and not the?
No, what, what you'd want, you'd wanna do, if you wanted to do that calculation, let's go over the specific page where we can do that. If you look with me, exhibit eight-three, I'm sorry, I wanna look at eight-five, which is on page twenty-two. What I would want you to have would be a minimum of twenty-five percent of, you see the twelve million, which is your operating expenses, it's about two-thirds away, and then add that to your transfers out, you transferred out a quarter of a million. Because in effect, by, and I know the transfers are discretionary, you're moving it to another fund, so you can do something with it over there, but you should consider your transfers out with your expenditures, and if your fund balance is greater than twenty-five percent of those two numbers, then I would say you're in good shape, and in this case, it is.
So in that case, this council would look at the twelve million dollars, plus, plus the two fifty?
Yes.
And so it'd be a twelve, two fifty, and we're now at seven million dollars of reserves, so we're somewhere around sixty percent.
You're hitting mid-fifties to sixty percent with that calculation. And that's strong, is a minimum, we say twenty-five cents, when you get over fifty percent, you're getting a strong fund balance, but if you have a five-year capital plan of capital improvements, or you have some other pending litigation, which I've seen before, they built the fund balance up for that, there are reasons to increase it. And, and some people who are very conservative say it's always better to have more than ninety days. Frankly, I just look at, if you're below ninety days, then you're starting to get in trouble, and I have seen one city, much smaller than you, but they went down to a twenty-one thousand dollar reserve, which was about fifteen days, and they had to squeak through for a year or two to like to build it back up.
Well, one of the things that we've done over the years is gone into borrowing money for some capital improvements that I think we need to look at over the long haul, that instead of borrowing money and paying interest, we pay it out of reserves. So the question always comes about, you know, in this council, as we talk about reserves, how much is the right amount of reserves? And I've always heard the ninety days, what's the chances, where are that all of our revenue streams are gonna drop at one time, it's, it just doesn't happen very often.
It's not likely, the, the biggest example of that is when you did have something like Hurricane Andrew, or something that comes in and wipes out your infrastructure, because your, most of your revenue comes from your adblock and taxes. If your infrastructure is wiped out, you won't be collecting that until it's rebuilt, so that, that's the reason, but the ninety-day rule is always so you can-
Operations.
-get some help from the feds. Again, when you get over fifty percent, then I like to, to ask, do you have a plan for use of that? Because at that point, if we can operate six months without collecting a dime, that's pretty strong.
It's really strong, and I think that's some of the stuff we, the council needs to look at over time, is some of our capital improvements, infrastructure repairs and stuff, not borrowing money, but instead, I'd hope the council would consider using revenue that's not interest-based.
And, and I would agree a hundred percent with that, particularly when interest rates go up. The problem right now is interest rates are so low that, you know, you really ought to be locking up some long-term borrowing, which I have a number of clients that are-
That's true, but at the same time, we should have interest-bearing accounts that draw some amount of money other than a quarter of a percent or half a percent, too.
That's true.
So that, yeah, it's a trade-off, it, it-
Yes, yes.
-at some point, so, thank you, Mayor.
Okay, any other questions for Mr. Crane?
Thank you very much, I, you know, you mentioned one thing in your comments, you just said it once, but I wanna reiterate the point that capital improvement plan and, and a mechanism to make decisions toward how those reserves might be spent, or, or how you, you look at what the future needs are of a community to stay ahead of infrastructure needs, and, you know, for the council, I know that, that echoes with discussions we've had recently in our, in our offsite, in our, our, you know, annual discussion, so I appreciate, you know, that comment, that, we understand that, and I think we're, we're looking at ways to try to, to define that, so that we, we do have a plan for the, for the future. And the, the ability for us as a, as a community to, to remain confident in the excellent work that our staff is doing to ensure these dollars, as you have reported tonight, are, are managed as, as excellently as they are, is also something that's noteworthy about what you said. And so, you know, Mark and Walter, again, y'all are doing a great job keeping track of these dollars and cents, and, and I think the community needs to understand as a whole that, that there is a conservative approach that's, that's taken to the management of your, your dollars, and we just need to continue to, to look for ways to, to remain as effective as possible with those as we move forward, so, so thank you very much.
Thank you very much for your time. With that, I will, I guess entertain a, a motion to accept this report and refer it to the Finance Committee.
May I still move?
It's been moved by Mr. Savin, seconded by Mr. Nix, to accept the report and refer it to the Finance Committee. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Okay, great, thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
And before you leave tonight, you might check out some barbecue here in Stevensville, we do that pretty good, too.
(laughing).
All right, and now we'll move on, we've got several members from the Chamber of Commerce here tonight, and I really appreciate that, and I'd like to call July Danley, the president of the Chamber, forward for her annual report.
Thank you, Mayor, and council members, we appreciate you inviting us to come and to share what is going on with tourism in the community, and on behalf of our Board of Directors, we just want to express the appreciation that we have for the positive relationship and partnership that we have together, and we look forward to continuing that. And our chamber is governed by a Board of Directors that are leaders in the business community, that help guide our staff and advise us and help us to put the budgets together, and we do have several of them here tonight, we have our Chair, Mr. Wendell Hollingsworth, our Past Chair, Milo Choate, Vice Chair, Steve Patterson, I think I saw Daryl Brown stick in, there he is, our Chair-elect, Daryl Brown, and Ms. Darla Doty, and I just appreciate them and their support of the chamber and the city, and taking very seriously that you've entrusted us with occupancy tax funds, so we appreciate them. Them being here, I also want to introduce, we have one of our Leadership Stevensville class participants, and as you know, we tour the city on Leadership Stevensville, and one of their requirements, so that they are engaged, is that they come to a city council meeting and get a better appreciation for our elected leaders, and Ms. Renee Goodwin is here from the Henderson Junior High, I think she's the only one that's here tonight. But Renee, we appreciate you coming, and she's probably sat through a few school board meetings, but city council's different, so we're glad that Renee's here. The mission of the chamber is to support and promote Stevensville in a unified effort to enhance growth and improve the quality of life by implementing programs in the areas of community development, economic development, and tourism development. And tourism development is probably one of the most fun, it's especially here in the cowboy capital of the world, and, and I believe that it's still an exciting time for tourism. Hotel occupancy tax revenues increased five percent from two thousand and ten to two thousand and eleven, they increased another thirteen percent from two thousand and twelve, from two thousand and eleven to two thousand and twelve, and then they've held steady this past year of two thousand and thirteen. And your chamber is hard at work utilizing these funds to bring events, people, and ultimately more dollars to Stevensville. Our community benefits from the many visitors that come to our great town for rodeos, ropings, expos, sporting tournaments, festivals, business conferences, and, and a whole lot more. And when it comes to the tourism, the chamber operates as our convention and visitor bureau, and we're the first place that people think of to call or to stop by when they're looking to visit Stevensville or to relocate to Stevensville. We receive calls every day from people looking to come here for everything from business, education, to sports, to recreation. And last year, we had over fifteen thousand visitors walk through our doors, and of course, some of those are local chamber members or local residents, but probably around seventy to seventy-five percent of those are people looking to visit Stevensville, find out what there is as attractions, or looking to move here. And so we enjoy handing out or mailing literally thousands of information guides that promote how wonderful Stevensville is, and fielding the over five thousand phone calls a year that we get asking about Stevensville. We have a tremendous staff that loves Stevensville and enjoys promoting it, and I have two of our staff members here tonight, Ms. Teresa Burdick and Jennifer Grandpree, and with all of the increased visitors and phone calls and guests and services that we're providing, in the past, we've had four full-time staff members and a part-time intern, and with our, our chamber budget this year, we have increased to having another, instead of having that part-time intern, we've made that a full-time position, a full-time assistant to just help us to more effectively serve our visitors and serve our members, and we're looking forward to that being allowing us to get out and meet with events more and, and work on some of the bigger projects. With respect for your time, 'cause I know several people have a lot of other things going on, I won't go into detail of the whole budget and every single event, but I do want to highlight a few of our goals and things that have happened this past year. Of the seven different areas in the tax code that are qualified for tourism expenses, advertising and promotion is one of them, and we do a lot of promotion to encourage tourists or out-of-towners to come to Stevensville. And according to the Office of the Governor, over fifty percent of tourism in Texas is from Texas residents going to different places, and that's one of the markets that we're really trying to reach, especially with people maybe not trying to spend as much money to go out of state or go on big huge trips, but to go on regional trips. And so we're continually increasing our marketing campaign to regional and statewide magazines, websites, using a lot of the web and social media to promote and connect people that are interested in, in Stevensville. One of the light items that you'll see in, in the budget that we have increased the budget for this year is the possibility of a new marquee sign downtown. Of course, welcome signage or marquee signage promoting Stevensville is, is something that can be, tourism money can be spent on, and, and right now, we split a lot of that, using half of it from our operating with the chamber fund and half from tourism, and so we're still working on the logistics of the, getting bids from our chamber members that could provide a digital marquee, and working with the city to see what the possibilities of coding and making that happen, but the board wanted to go ahead and put it in the budget to spend about fifteen thousand from the tourism budget and fifteen thousand that'll be from our operating budget, too. A digital marquee would allow us to provide emergency announcements on there much more quickly than having somebody go change it, and would allow us to promote a lot of the community events without having to go out and change it in the snow, which we, or the freezing cold, which we seem to have more of recently than usual, so we're, we're excited about the possibility of that and are still looking into the logistics. As far as event support, which is a big portion of what the tax dollars go to, over fifteen major events and numerous smaller events have received the report, and when the board makes a decision on the amount, they take into consideration the total number of hotel nights, the total attendance, the overall impact of the event, and the amount requested from the producer. And our conservative estimate, if you total all of the events that we have supported financially, it can be responsible for about sixty-five hundred hotel night stays and over one hundred thousand visitors, and those visitors are staying anywhere from one to five days. And if we, we take a very conservative average of just two days each, and them spending a hundred dollars a day, which most of them will spend more than that, even if they just gas up once, that's a twenty million dollar direct impact. If that dollar just turns over once, that's a forty million dollar impact, but most communities will agree that a dollar turns over up to seven times in a community, so that's about a hundred and forty million economic impact that our visitors that are coming for the different events are having in our community, which is very exciting. The event support helps the producers to pay for advertising in the region, in the state, in the nation for their events, and we also provide them a lot of promotion through our communication avenues and resources. A couple of events that I just want to highlight that are new or have, or have increased, one that you haven't seen on your budget before is the forty-plus team roping championship finals, and that is an association that's been growing rapidly in the last few years, the Lloyd South Productions, that puts on the forty-plus team ropings, and that is forty years and older, and it has, was in Hamilton a couple of years ago, and was a two-day event, and last year, it moved to Stevensville for a three-day event, and it's gonna be a four-day event this year, and we'll have over four thousand ropers here for four days, four hundred to five hundred hotel rooms for two to three nights, and the people that come to this are from all fifty states, it's, it's a, it's a nationwide, so a lot of national publications, a lot of website, a lot of social media that will be, for that event coming here, so that's exciting. The Cowboy Capital Mounted Shooting, that was our first year to have that last year, and we took a leap of faith in encouraging them to come for a four-day event in hopes that they would love it here in Stevensville, and they did, and they're coming back for an eight-day event this year. And with that mounted shooting series with over four hundred entries and them staying in hotels for the five to eight days during the event, we've also had from that event, which is nationwide, Canada, a lot of different people coming, we've had a few people that have even moved here since then, that are from Colorado or from other places, because they liked the atmosphere that they found here in Stevensville, and our mayor was even willing to participate in the celebrity shooting, and we'll be having a celebrity shooting, yes.
Can I see his face?
(laughing).
Great picture in the paper.
He was, he was serious about it, too, very serious. We will be having a celebrity shooting again, so if there's anybody who would like to try their hand at riding a horse fast and shooting balloons off of poles, let me know, I can sign you up for it. We're, we're excited, that event gets a lot of exposure in a lot of different areas that we haven't typically reached before. The Cowboy Capital Richess Ranch Rodeo, which was actually held this past weekend, is the first ranch rodeo that's been held at Lone Star Arena, and we had over twenty-five teams from four or five states in our area that came, and it was a very good crowd for their first ranch rodeo, brought a lot of people here, and that's only gonna grow because of the excitement and the interest in, in that aspect of the sport. The Cowboy Capital PRCA rodeo had a phenomenal year, and, and there was a lot of changes that went into the rodeo with the new committee this past year that I told you about last year, and we were thrilled with the outcome. Our attendance from the contestants was close to double, and our spectators was huge, we had a packed house, all, all three performances and the parade, and just a lot of, our Cowboy Capital of the World Facebook page, which we're embracing the social media and using that quite a bit, went from three hundred likes last year to over thirty-seven hundred after the rodeo. The welcome message that was a video that was from the mayor that portrayed Stevensville in the Cowboy Capital, that welcome message was shared several hundred times, and that's a lot of people that aren't Stevensville people that are sharing that, and so that's good, good PR for the area. The Joe Beaver's Labor Day Junior Superstars Roping is another one that has grown and is, and that we're excited that he's coming back, he's created a series and a finals, and that's all twenty-one and under, so that's families, families with siblings and, and people staying and, and spending more money here, and that'll be a, a three-day event, which is exciting. Several of the other ones are ones that we've supported for several years and that just continue to bring, to bring people to stay. One of the one that is not on your budget, because we actually took it out of the reserve fund last year, every year, we keep a little bit in reserve for requests that come up through the year, and the Texas High School Rodeo Association Region Three Rodeo and Finals is, we agreed to support them out of the reserve fund last year, and they're having, they had a rodeo in January, they'll have another one in February, and then the Region Three Finals in March, and there were several other arenas that were competing for them, and we were able to bring them here, and we're excited about that. That's two hundred and fifty to three hundred high school students and their families that are here for three weekends, which is a perfect place for them to do that. Another event that I wanted to mention that's not on the request, because they didn't necessarily ask for tourism funds, but that we've helped, is the Texas Heely Roundup, and if anybody knows what an Austin Heely vehicle is, I didn't, I had to Google it, but it's a fancy little car, they, there are Heely groups throughout the state of Texas, and they have a Heely Roundup every year, and it's North Texas group, anyway, they're coming in April, and we've been facilitating their hotel event stays and their access to parking for their shows and just the different logistics, a place to have their banquet and their awards ceremony, so that's gonna be about eighty hotel rooms for two nights that they've already booked for booked for April, and just working with logistics. So, it's very fun to see how many people hear about Stevensville and the hospitality and then, and then decide to bring their events here. And I know that you will see on the event list that numerous of the events are associated with Lone Star Arena, and we, we kind of see Lone Star right now as our convention center. If there's one dream goal I would have is that, that we long-term look for the possibility of a convention center here in Stevensville, and maybe that can be in future discussions, but we don't have a place where we can host large meetings, but we have an arena that can host Western events, and we're taking advantage of that as much as we can. Along with the events that we support financially, we also help facilitate accommodations for corporate meetings, conferences, family reunions, horse clinics, roping schools, bear racing clinics. And we've also had several international visitors this year that we've helped coordinate. There's a lot of ag tours that happen. We had a group from Poland, we had a group that was from twenty-three different countries. It was a group of twenty-five people from twenty-three different countries that was like their ag government leader that came, and so, we helped with their hotel stays and getting them a tour of the different ag operations, so. It's amazing how many people come through Stevensville that you may not realize it, but most of them all know about our barbecue when they leave, if nothing else. As you can see, the Chamber is very hard at work utilizing the funds that you've entrusted with us to invest, reinvest in Stevensville and bring more people and more dollars here. And we look forward to continuing devoting our staff time, devoting our resources to improve the events, to improve relationships with the event producers, and to see how we can not only get new events, but increase and expand the events that are already here, as well as look at new opportunities. The proposed budget that you have in front of you is based on the projected occupancy tax revenues at the four cent tax allocation, and we believe that the figures and information presented show that we've been a good stewards of the funds that you've entrusted with us and can, can continue to provide a high return on investment for, for our tax dollars. And we always do so, making sure that we're in keeping with the state tax code guidelines that show what we can and can't spend, spend those dollars on. The Chamber greatly appreciates getting to work with each of you and the, all of you are volunteers and are dedicating your time to make wise decisions about allocating our tax dollars, and, and the community appreciates that. We know that it's a big sacrifice, and we're glad that somebody, that several of you are willing to take the time to do that. So, we look forward to a continued positive relationship, and I would be glad to answer any questions that you have.
Thank you, July. Any questions from the council?
July, I'd like to nominate Councilmember Cross for the Cowboy Capital Mounted Shooting Event, if that's possible. I don't need a second there, but, in your opinion, our greatest economic development need in this community is a convention center?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Thank you.
We, we, there's a lot of lost opportunity and a lot, there's so many events and meetings and things that we could bring here if we had a place for them to meet.
I appreciate all you do for our community. Thank you, Mayor.
Others? Mr. Nix.
That intrigues me because you spoke of the restrictions on the hotel mobile occupancy tax that, that y'all are under. Would a convention center, the construction and/or operation maintenance of a convention center fall under those guidelines?
Yes, sir.
Okay. A hundred percent, or is, is that broken down, or?
There, there's basically seven different guidelines that, that tourism money can be spent on. The first one is the funding improvement enlarging, equipping, repairing, operation of convention center facilities or visitor information facilities. And our Chamber office is a visitor information facility, but yes, convention is, I mean, that's a big part of what hotel taxes could be spent on. And so, there could be the potential for setting funds aside from it each year to save up for that type of cause. Advertising and promotion, arts, historical, and sporting events are some of the other ones that are on that list, but certainly.
Thank you, Dan. Mr. Svein?
I just want to say thank you for the hard work that you do in the Chamber and all the Chamber members, particularly the Board, but I can tell you that your face is all over the place. It's a pretty face, first of all, but, you know, that smile and your interaction with the community, I appreciate very much what you do. Secondly, your student here, Renee Goodman, who's part of Stevenson, Leadership Stevensville, y'all ought to sit, listen to her sing sometime. If you don't know that, she has, she has an angelic voice, you need to hear that. She's also probably a pretty good principal.
We have a lot of hidden talents in our community.
Other comments? A few. Dr. Cross?
Since the, since you've mentioned Leadership Stevensville, I continue to have warm and happy memories of my own participa, participation in it. Actually, I do ride and shoot, and the only reason why I'm not going to volunteer for, for the mounted shooting event is that I don't want to make anyone else look bad.
There you go, Mayor Chow.
Okay, Malcolm, I was looking forward to settling up next to you. Oh, well, we'll have to wait, wait on that. Maybe, any other comments? I, I would, if, if the council would, would allow me.
Sure.
July, thank you for all you do for this community. The Board, the Chamber Board, thank you for what you do. One of the key things that you kept saying about what's going on in the community is the emphasis on family, and it's been phenomenal. If, if the folks in this room haven't been paying attention about what's going on at Lone Star Arena, and the new manager that they've got out there, and the work the Chamber is doing to help them understand how this community's built on family, and if they're going to be successful, they need to join us, and y'all are being successful in doing that, and it's obvious. These multi-day events that, that you're focused on are not the traditional rodeo, come in, maybe not even eat while you jump in your truck and head someplace else. Y'all are concentrating on trying to, to bring the uniqueness that that center brings to our community to leverage us and separate us from our competitive communities. And so, that, that's truly important, and for you to do it in a way that's not chasing money, but it's chasing that family value, I think is really important combination of what, what's going on in that, and, and that is so exciting to hear about. One thing you didn't mention that, that I think is very critically important, the Chamber participated in two other veteran-related events. The American Legion had a nationwide motorcycle ride that came through Stevensville, and the Chamber stepped up to the plate and helped with that. And we had the first Veterans Day Parade here in Stevensville in over forty years, and, and the Chamber was behind the scenes, providing rooms for high school ROTC, for soldiers coming up from Fort Hood, reaching out to the community and making sure that that was happening. So, it was a phenomenal effort that went into that, and, and you're to be commended for that. Thirdly, you talk about tenacious. That was the definition that July Danley took on when Bandera came on the radar about Cowboy Capital. And she didn't let go, and because of that, I mean, we got legislative action, and we've got American flags now, and, I mean, the Cowboy Capital is, is alive and well here in Stevensville, and, and July Danley, you were at the forefront of, of making sure that that, that name was not infringed upon. And so, that, you know, thank you for that. And then, finally, there, there are some things that don't require tax dollars or money to make a difference in this community, and oftentimes, it's just bringing the community together to work on a problem so that together, we are better than we are separately. And I know many of you have heard us talk about the task force and the effort that's going on there, and the Chamber has been a participant in that with Steadco, the city. And I, I want to thank the Chamber for your willingness because it is an economic development initiative for us to come together and talk about how do we together make this, this community more business development capable? And that, that effort is well on its way to, to making a, a huge impact for our community. And the Chamber has been right in, in the middle of that, and so, I really thank y'all's, y'all's for your, for, for your work there. So, you definitely have touched on all three of the, the major pillars of what the Chamber's supposed to be doing for this community, and so, thank you very much for that and for your report. And with that, I will entertain a motion to accept and approve the report.
Mayor?
I move we approve the Chamber Commerce Tourism Budget and Annual Report.
I'll second. It's been moved by Mr. McDaniel, seconded by Mr. Pendleton to accept and approve the report as presented. Any discussion? Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
All is opposed? Okay, that motion carries, and the report's accepted. Thank you. All right, next item on the agenda is from Chief Bridges with the Stevenson Police Department Racial Profiling Report. Good chief?
Good evening, Mayor and Council. The legislature requires each year that I provide a racial profiling report to you all prior to March first, and that's why I'm here for this evening. You'll turn to page five in your handout. You'll notice in the year two thousand thirteen, that's calendar year two thousand thirteen, the department had three thousand thirty-one contacts, traffic, motor vehicle related contacts. Overwhelmingly, the contact searches, consensual searches, and probable cause searches and arrests were of Caucasian drivers. You'll turn over to the next page. Contacts based on percentages compared to the fair road standard. The fair road standard is the preferred method of measurement by civil liberties groups such as ACLU, NAACP, and others. It is deemed to be the most transparent. That fair road standard is, is based off of census data, and as you can see, our contacts are fairly close to the census data showing households with vehicle access. Going to page seven of these three thousand thirty-one stops, you know, oftentimes, the whole issue of racial profiling came about with individuals claiming that they've been stopped based on the color of their skin or their ethnicity rather than a traffic violation. As you'll see out of these three thousand thirty-one stops, in only a hundred and forty-one of those stops, did the officer know the race or ethnicity of the person they were stopping, and a hundred and nineteen of those one hundred and forty-one stops came during daylight hours. And I'll conclude that we are also required to track complaints by the public on racial profiling, and in two thousand thirteen, there were no complaints on any member of Stevenson Police Department for racial profiling. Mayor, that concludes my report. If you or council have any questions.
Any questions for Chief Bridges? All right. Mr. Svein?
I, I didn't call you personally about this the other day, but I want you to know one of your officers stopped my wife. But she was in an emergency situation where her mother had a stroke, and I want you to know your officer did an exceptionally professional job, and I appreciate that.
Thank you.
Any other comments? Okay, I'd.
Mayor, I move we accept Chief Bridges' report.
Second. It's been moved by Mr. Nix, seconded by Mr. Pendleton, to accept the racial profiling report as presented. Any discussion? Okay, all is in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? All right, that report's accepted as presented. Thank you, chief. Right now, we'll move to the Planning and Zoning Commission section of the agenda tonight, and the first item on the agenda is a public hearing to consider request to rezone from R3 multifamily residential district to B2 retail and commercial district, the southernmost two hundred and fifty-eight feet of Lot 51, Block 134, City Edition, located at fourteen sixteen West Washington Street. And at this time, I'll open the public hearing and ask Ms. Chu to present us with the information.
Thank you, Mayor. This does come forth as a favorable recommendation to rezone from R3 to B2, the southern portion of this property. Fourteen sixteen West Washington is the location of McDonald's Restaurant, and the owners are requesting that the southern portion, which is in the hatched area, be rezoned to B2 as the front portion presently is. Commission did hold a public hearing. Considering this request, there was no opposition to the request, and this does come forth as a favorable recommendation. You have in your packet the staff report, the map, and also an ordinance on page fourteen, which would affect the zoning change. If you have any questions regarding the staff report, I would be happy to answer those.
Any questions?
I have a quick question there.
Go ahead.
Betty, it probably tells me it is answered to this question somewhere in here, but was it unanimous recommendation?
Yes, it is.
Thank you.
Okay, Mr. Nix?
Betty, is this a, a single lot, or is this two individual lots?
Actually, there are prox, I believe there's parts of, well, they, they recently replated. There were parts of four lots when the original structure was built back in nineteen seventy-seven or seven, seventy-eight. They did, they were not at that time, I guess, required to replat, so there was the southern portion of the property that was not zoned, and that's the area where the parking lot is right now. And also, I believe that's their bat dumpster area also. But it, they did recently replat it.
Okay.
And the ordinance reflects that replat.
Did we have any correspondence from any of the neighbors that received letters?
No, sir.
Okay, any other questions?
Yeah, this is just a technicality, they're just going to keep it as a parking lot?
Yes.
Okay.
Okay. All right, this time, I'd like to ask if anyone would like to come and speak in favor of the request. Just state your name and address for the record, please.
My name is Clay Christie.
Just come on down here. Yep, sorry about that.
That's all right. I'm Clay Christie with Claymore Engineering, representing McDonald's this evening here. Just as he said, it's an existing parking lot. It was something that was done previously when they constructed the facility. We're looking to clean things up, kind of as a formality, get everything zoned in correctly. We have an existing parking lot there. Our intention is to rebuild the facility with a newer, nicer facility, and so, if there's any questions, I'll be happy to ask. I think the staff did a very good job presenting what we're trying to do here. So, my address is two three two eight Lotus Avenue, Fort Worth, Texas. Sorry about that. But if there's any questions, I can help.
All right, thanks. Any questions? All right, thank you very much. Anyone else wishing to come forward and speak in favor of the request? All right, anyone wishing to come and speak in opposition to the request? All right, seeing none, at this time, I'll close the public hearing and consider a motion to adopt the ordinance.
Mayor, I move that we approve ordinance number two thousand fourteen two.
Okay, it's been moved by Mr. Hogan, seconded by Mr. Nix, to consider adopting ordinance twenty fourteen zero two to rezone the property as presented. Any discussion? All right, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All is opposed? Okay, that motion carries. Ordinance twenty fourteen zero two is approved rezoning from R3 multifamily residential district to B2 retail and commercial business district, Block 51, Block 134, City Edition, at fourteen sixteen West Washington Street. All right, let's proceed to the next item, and that, I'll again, open a public hearing to consider a request to add Health Club, Weight, and Aerobic Center to the permitted uses in the downtown district zoning classification. Betty?
Thank you, Mayor. This is a request to amend the primary or permitted uses in the downtown district to add the Health Club, Weight, and Aerobic Center. When the downtown district was established, that was not considered a primary or conditional use. The Commission is recommending at this time, the downtown district is the area that's, that's in the light blue or light purple. They are recommending by unanimous vote that the Health Club, Weight, and Aerobic Center be included, and there is an ordinance on page eighteen, which would affect this addition to, as a primary use to the downtown district. If you have any questions, I would be happy to answer those.
Any questions? Mr. Svein?
With aerobics, I'm sure that P&amp;Z considered this, if you just discuss it for a moment, parking and related to downtown, that particular type of business usage and parking in the downtown area?
Yes, that, that was discussed. Of course, the downtown area, you are not required to have onsite parking. Actually, there are public parking areas such as our plaza. One that is proposed has some additional parking to the north of it, so, yes, that was something that was discussed.
Okay, is that parking the bank parking lot that they own across the street?
It, it could be any parking. Actually, the building where they're proposing to have this use has additional parking behind them to the east on their property.
Did y'all look at? Did y'all look at amount of use if we add this particular zoning or this business option in that zoning district, downtown business district? The amount of parking that will require and is there really going to be adequate parking? I'm assuming that's one of the reasons it wasn't put there originally.
Actually, I really don't know why it wasn't included in that original proposal. With any of the uses in the downtown district originally that were placed in there and also the additions, there is always consideration of parking volume. There's also consideration, you know, of hours of operation and other things specific to the uses that are already in the district and the use that is proposed.
So, I'm assuming that P&amp;Z then actually consider they think that parking will be adequate in the area then?
They feel that parking will be adequate in the downtown area for any of the properties.
Okay. That was a question that was asking me. I just want to make sure I got it answered.
Further questions for Betty? Mr. Nick?
Betty, is the Health Club and Weight Center, is that a permitted use in the central business district?
I would have to check and see. I don't remember specifically.
We separated that intentionally, the downtown versus the central business district, and I wondered if we changed it in one and it's not in the other, do we need to consider looking at that maybe in the future perhaps?
Yes, and I will check and see. I don't remember specifically if it is...if it was in the central business district. I'm thinking it may be, but I'm not for sure.
Well, I can't remember either.
I would need to check my ordinance.
Other questions for Betty? All right, then, this time, I'll ask if anyone wishes to come forward and speak in favor of the request? Okay, anyone wishing to come and speak in opposition to the request? At this time, then, close the public hearing and consider a motion.
Mayor, I move that we approve the ordinance, the change in the ordinance to allow this service in the downtown business district.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved by Mr. Sivin, seconded by Mr. McDannell to consider adopting ordinance 2014-03, amending the zoning ordinance of the city of Stevieville by adding Health Club, Weight and Aerobic Center to the permitted uses in the downtown district zoning classification. Any discussion? Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Okay, that motion carries unanimous vote, and thank you, Betty, for that presentation. We'll move now to item number seven, which is considering approval of agreement providing water service to 2158 East Washington. And Mark, do you or Betty want to present this?
Let me go ahead and take a shot at it anyway. Ms. Ferguson approached the city about connecting on to city water. Her water well went down. I know that she made some personal contact with several of you during her stressful moments that she was trying to work out how she was going to get this resolved. There is a water line out in front of...that the original water line that was put into service Textot when Textot built their new facility. That facility is outside of the city limits. Ms. Ferguson's property is therefore still remains beyond the city limit sign, and there's some challenges to this situation. But she has agreed, and in particular, we can't...she could petition to come inside the city and therefore become a city customer, connect on the services, but we...there is another property owner between her and the city limit sign. And we can't skip around people and go and just meander beyond the city limits. So therefore, what she has agreed is to, when we go to look at petition and/or extend our city limits and annex that piece of property, you know, basically, she agrees to come inside the city limits. But in the meantime, we can agree with her then to allow her to connect on to the services. She will still continue to pay as an outside city limit customer, which is at 115% of the existing rates, and then she'll pay the prorated portion for the service line in essence that goes out there beyond. And just so that everybody kind of understands there, when a water line is extended for any purposes, the size of that pipeline is obviously dictated by what we anticipate the growth to extend beyond that point and/or to continue to service that entire area depending upon potential land uses. We pay for that upsize, what I'm going to call upsize, from what a traditional service line would be. The remaining portion, the cost in essence to put the line in and have the service lines go out there, that cost is therefore bur...that is burdened and/or assessed to the property owners, and it's assessed half of the property on one side of the road, half of the property on the other side. So that cost is split. And what we do is assess for the frontage of that based upon their frontage area, based upon those calculations that I've just mentioned. So, the assessment is defined there. Let me just tell you, one of the other things that we did work with Ms. Ferguson on is she does own a very large frontage lot, and we've agreed to allow her just the portion that has her house on it and not what I would call the undeveloped area. We're only assessing her for that section there, and obviously, and she's agreeing to this agreement, to therefore, with available, be petitioned in the city and come inside the city limits. Two, that if she develops that property, the undeveloped section of her property, then at that point in time, she will have to pay the assessments. And then, three, she'll be paying the assessments and agreeing to the service charges that we've provided. So, that is what this agreement is about. Now, let me just tell you, because I know I've had a few questions about this. Have we done this before? Yes, we've done this before, and because we have periodic situations like this. The, you know, the issue is when we go in and put in a service line anywhere, we want that property owner to maximize the investment that they've made in their water well, in their septic system, in any other utilities that they have, whether we annex them or not annex them at that particular time. But when their systems and they have to make an investment, and I know that y'all...my understanding is she expressed some of the financial challenges that she was looking at, once she realized that, you know, I'm going to have to make an investment, then at that point in time, we want that investment to be with city services. And so, with that said, that's what's happening here. We've done this in the past, and it has worked very well, and I believe this is something that can be a win-win for both Ms. Ferguson and for the city of Stevieville. And so, we do recommend it, and hopefully, I've explained all the details of that particular arrangement that's been spelled out here. So, we're glad to answer any other questions.
Okay, questions for Mark? Go ahead.
Mark, Textot is on the north side of the highway, and according to the plat on this, it looks like it's on the south side of the highway, so am I assuming correctly that the water line is going to go under 377?
That Textot paid for the bore, and they're the ones that actually...
Oh, so it's already on her side?
I believe that's correct. It's on her side, and she'll be...she will not have to pay for the bore. That is...
Okay, very good, thank you.
That can be very costly for some...
Yes, I don't think so.
You know, that's part of the challenges that we have to deal with as well, but she does not have to bear that cost.
Very good.
Okay, other questions? All right, if there are no further questions, then I'd entertain a motion to approve the agreement.
Mayor, I move that we approve the agreement for services to be provided outside of the city limits for the property mentioned by Ms. Ferguson. It only is owned by Ms. Ferguson.
Okay, it's been moved by Mr. Nick, seconded by Mr. Pendleton, to approve the agreement providing water service to 2158 East Washington as presented. Any discussion?
Point of clarification, this is at no cost to the taxpayer. It's going to be fully paid for.
This line has been installed, and she will be actually reimbursing us for our costs that we've actually expanded up to this point in time for this. So, there is no cost to the taxpayers in this particular...
Thank you.
Okay, any other questions? Okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? All right, that motion carries unanimous vote. Okay. But the next item on the agenda is to consider approval of local project avenue...excuse me, advanced funding agreement, which is the formal name given to the Bosque River Trail Extension Project by the Texas Department of Transportation. And this is an agreement between the city of Stevieville and Textot. And so, Mark, I'll turn it back to you and let you go over that for us, please.
Thank you. About a year and a half ago, I believe it was August of 2012, we had applied for a grant, a transportation grant, to extend the Bosque River Trail from its current ending point of Tarleton Street to go as far, what I'm going to say, as far north as we could, at least to connect both our Washington Street through the Tarleton Connection all the way to at least Highway 8. You know, there's been some discussion, eventually, we'd like to go up to Highway 108, which would be up to the north side of the Foster Home. But again, we're trying to stay within some realistic matching arrangements. We made that application. We were notified here, I guess, about two or three months ago that we were successful. These are the documents and contractual arrangements for us to be able to move forward with that project. As far as actual, some notifications, just on page 24, it actually identifies the scope of the project. Just for your information, you can just read, that's basically covering the prescription...a description of the project, which is approximately 7,000 linear feet. And then, probably the more important piece of it is, is that I need y'all to understand on page 41, the commitment that we are making now by signing this document is that we do recognize, we understand that we're going to have some financial commitment. The estimated cost to the city of Stevieville is $545,338, as identified on page 41. The total cost that actually the grant to us, now, it's a reimbursement grant. We pay it out, we get reimbursed for it, they give us their portion of it, but if we maximize our...the grant, we will receive $1,401,652 in this particular project. The only thing that, and I know we've discussed this in workshops and committees, but I want to make sure I just go ahead and, again, everybody to recognize, we are out the cost of the real estate. In the past, the previous grant, the difference between the last grant and this grant has really been the cost of the land, as well as the cost...you can see, we have a complete design cost is 100% borne by us as well. So, it's not just a true...this is an 80/20 grant, and by the time we end up getting through with it, I'm not sure what our percentage will be, but it's obviously going to be a little bit more than the full 20%. So, I just want to just make that clarification. But as of right now, we're making the commitment to provide the land and recognizing $545,000. With that, I'll be glad to answer any other questions. We're still in the...I believe here shortly, we'll be hiring somebody to design this product. I think on this project, we'll be hiring that to get it designed, and we've been...we've actually received some acquisition of properties. We've received one piece of property that is of substantial size, and I just want to do some special recognition for that individual. We'll do some more as we go through this process, but obviously, anybody that's willing to donate this property, hopefully, it's a win-win for them as well. We want to give them due recognition, and we'll make sure we do that, and I'd like to do it in a little bit more special way than kind of through these contractual pieces, but we'll talk about that at another time. So, I'll be glad to answer any other questions.
Any questions for Mark?
I have a few, Mayor.
Okay.
The first question I have, Mark, is of the $545,000 that we're required for our 20%, the people that donate the land to us for free, is considered in-kind toward that dollar amount?
No.
That's actually going to come in cash out of our budget, $545,000?
Yes.
Okay, where in the budget is it?
It's in our grant matching. If you'll remember, we have, I want to say, a million dollars that we've set aside for our matching, and we've even discussed, and as the auditor recognized, we've been setting aside some monies for these days, and we...just to remind you, we've been setting money aside for the airport runway extension and this project or something very similar. So, we know these have been on the drawing board for quite some time.
Very good. I have been told that on the other section of the Bosque River Trail, the lack of restrooms is a problem. Are we going to have restrooms, hopefully, in this section, so that it won't continue to be a problem?
This project will not pay for a restroom, but we are working because we recognize now, on a three-mile run, we may need to have a little rest stop somewhere besides just a parking lot.
Okay, but we don't get credit toward that out of the $545,000?
No, we will not.
That'll be outside the scope of this 80/20 match.
It will end up being outside the scope.
And how many miles is 7,000 linear feet?
It's going to be about a mile and a half. You know, we currently have a mile and a half. We're going to try to get another mile and a half in here when it's all said and done, and have about a three-mile course, pretty close to it. Maybe we can have it a full 5K, but they'd have to park at one end, run to the other, and then have a 5K to get back to their car, I guess. But anyway...
And don't forget, if I can just add to that, you know, we were able to get the Texas Parks and Wildlife Department grant, which will connect the southern end of the trail to the city park, and so, theoretically, you've got those paved surfaces in the park added to it as well, so...
We've...we still don't have that contract yet, so I don't want to...but...
One final question.
We're hoping to continue to keep working on this entire corridor, yes.
This question may be premature, but I noticed that this mile and a half is going to take us to Lingaville Road or Highway 8, and has there been any discussions or have we known how other people have dealt with obstacles like that on the continuation of the hike and bike trail from that point when you come up to a major highway?
Well, now, the, you know, the project is, is to get us under the bridge and get to the other side of Highway 8, not stop at Highway.
Okay, to go under it?
I mean, very similar to...
Because I hadn't heard any discussion, and I was just curious.
Very similar to the projects that we had completed a few years ago. It stops up under the bridge, and, you know, now, that was a different reason to stop there, but, you know, a big part of this is, and one of the real emphasis, both by the federal government, while they're making these investments, they're trying to provide and encourage alternate transportation. And so, and alternate transportation is especially key to from highways to highways and/or from significant commerce areas. Let me just tell you, you know, I'm going to say the College Farm to the Foster Home, both have some significant areas. We're trying to go all the way to the soccer field, maybe the golf course, maybe even further, but, you know, obviously, we've just got some financial constraints that we're working within. But, you know, that endpoint and then tying back into these other transportation corridors is what's given us the points to get us apparently recognized.
Very good, thank you.
Any other questions? Mr. Nick?
Mark, after we have all of these things in place and the contract is signed by both parties, do we have a timeframe that we're working in for this project?
We have to have a contract of let within two years, or this will be a dead project, unlike the last one that took us 10 or 12 years. And we were probably one of the poster childs for why, you know, something's going to have to give, you know? So, it puts us all under a need to get this thing completed.
To answer your question? Okay, all right. Any other questions for Mark?
Mayor, I saw a few heads shake when Mark said that the concept of this is to take this highway money and build bike paths and trails for alternate transportation, and I'll tell you that I'm opposed to using highway money for bike paths and nature trails. I think we ought to spend it on improving our infrastructure, but if we don't do this and we don't use this, it's going to go to someone in Chicago or New York or California, so I'm 100% in agreement with us doing this.
All right. All right. Any other comments or questions? All right, if not, I'll entertain a motion.
I would move that we approve this agreement between the city and TexDOT.
Second.
Been moved by Mr. Evans, seconded by Mr. Hogan to approve the LP-FAFA between the city of Steenville and TexDOT for the Bosque River Trail Extension Project. Any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right, that motion carries, unanimous vote. Okay, then the next item on the agenda for the council to, to share with the citizens, we, we on the 20th of January met in a work session to talk about our planning process and, and on those pages 42 and 44 is a summary of those items. Basically, we spent half a day looking at the strategic plan for the city of Steenville, looking at the comprehensive plan, where are we in that? Where are we compared to what we talked about a year ago? And had a very good discussion. Each of the, each of the committees, committee chairs then broke off with city staff and spent some time talking about the priorities between the committee and, and the staff to make goals that were realistic, items that were of interest to, to both the, the near-term current needs, but also looking down on, you know, the horizon, areas that we may need to, to elevate in, in priority or, or to reprioritize. And so, basically, what we've ended up with is a top five list for each of the city council committees, and that really becomes a roadmap for their action moving forward. We came back together as a, as a council to review these items and see if there were any outliers, say anything we forgot about, we wanted to add, make sure that we understood what we were talking about, because these are listed basically as, as one or two word bullet items. And so, some really good discussion out of that. And we will obviously now be using this as part of our roadmap as we move forward. Let me just stop there and see if there's any of the council members or, or committee chairs that would like to say anything about the, the list or any comments about the offsite. Mr. Evans?
Let me mention in the, the planning and development area, and I want to speak specifically to number five, privatization of mowing and then the landfill as mentioned. I wouldn't say that privatization was, was one of our top five priorities in the planning and development committee. We, that's just something that we talked about. And what we talked about is if we're going to try to privatize something, a good place to start might be the mowing that we do with the park department and the trail. We talked about the trail and the cemetery and some of that stuff, maybe privatizing that, you know, take that out for bid and see if it saves us any money. There never was any meaningful discussion in our committee about privatizing the landfill. Certainly, one of the areas that, that was of importance to us was street improvement and that is, that, that is not in this list and certainly should be in our top five. So, I, I don't know who, who made this list or how, how this list was made, but I, certainly in the planning and development area, I don't, I don't agree with this list and I would suggest you, we add street improvement and drop this privatization. I, I know there's discussion, but I don't know that it was in our top five.
Mark, you want to?
Well, I mean, we, uh, the mowing and landfill, all I was doing was coming, going off my, my notes and so, I just apologize. And it, so, I mean, but, but I'll, I mean, I'll be more than happy to, to do this. I know, I can tell you there's a couple of places and it appears to me that maybe Cindy was doing a little cut and paste and she's not here to defend herself, but you, you can see number five and number five, they're kind of duplicated and you can also see number four and number four are duplicated. And I know that, like under the public works section, the emergency notification system is actually the automated meter infrastructure system there. So, you know, I appreciate it. We'll make, we'll make those, we'll make those corrections here to clean this up and I'll just put street.
We've had a tendency in the past that we.
So, I apologize.
We make these little lists and something seems to make a list and nobody says anything about it and then it just becomes the law.
And I appreciate that. I appreciate that. You're good.
I'm not going to let this go this time because.
You're, you're right.
You know, the landfill, I talked to Mr. Nix this morning and we, I guess we're having a senior moment, but we had a disagreement about whether we even mentioned it or not, so. I think Alan's wrong and that it was never mentioned, but he seems to think maybe we mentioned it a little. So, it's somewhere between very little and not at all.
My apologies for.
It was mentioned in Brady's committee.
I wrote it down somewhere.
They talked about a compactor.
I, I wrote it down somewhere.
If you're home, you're leaving somebody else alone, so I'll take it. Well, and, and, you know, Scott, that, that's an excellent point. I, I think the, the takeaway from this is that, that we, we continue to work together as a group to, to prioritize the requirements and make sure that we have a plan laid forward so that collectively, we, we understand what, you know, what's, what's the number one thing that the planning and development committee is working about, working for. And, and if there, if there are corrections or things that need to be made, that's, that's one of the reasons that we meet and talk about this stuff. So, you know, thank you for bringing that up and, and, you know, I think the, the other thing, excuse me, go ahead.
Well, we've got some streets in town we can't hardly get up and down and certainly that would be in our top five out of, out of the planning and development committees.
Right. Any other comments? I think I heard the question about the automated note, uh, meter notification is on that number five there in the public works.
Number four.
Number four, yeah.
I, I think that's just a typo, Mayor, because that came down from number four in the public health and safety, that's my opinion.
Yeah.
And that's just a typo.
Yeah, that's good. You're right. Any other comments? Mark, you got any thing you'd like to add? Okay, great. All right, then we'll move to the consent agenda.
Mayor, I would like to take off item number B.
Okay. Anything else? All right, then I'd consider a motion to approve the consent agenda minus item B.
So moved.
Second.
All right. Motion by Mr. Hogan, seconded by Mr. Evans to approve the consent agenda minus item B. Any discussion?
Yes, I want to just make a couple of comments.
Okay.
I just want everybody to realize that number, item C and D there, I'm not asking to pull them off at all, is, were tremendously large projects and we got a lot done. I appreciate everybody, what they did on that project, those two projects. We have improved the city of Steenville by doing this.
All right, any other comments, questions? All right, then all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right, then we'll. Mr. McGanell, you ordered.
Discuss item B?
Item B, yes.
Now, correct me if I'm wrong, but on page 49, it says that we are ordering, ordering an election for May 12. And I looked on my calendar and normally we have our city elections on a Saturday. The closest Saturday to May 12 is, is May 10. So, I'm asking if we need to correct that date?
That should actually be May the 10th, 2014.
Okay. With that correction, Mayor, I move approval of item number B.
Second.
Okay, a motion by Mr. McGanell, seconded by Mr. Evans to amend item B to state May 10th, 2014. Any discussion?
Mayor, do we need to adjust any of the early voting dates based on that? Is due?
They are correct.
They are correct.
Okay. Good question. Any other questions or discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? All right, that motion carries as stated. All right, next on the agenda, Mr. Kaiser.
Thank you. I really don't have much really to report this evening. I'll be glad to answer any questions. This is, as I mentioned several times, this is really more of a, of a planning period of time, beginning to schedule a lot of the work and construction that, that usually occurs during the summertime. But, I do want to point out our pending meeting dates. We do have a, a meeting scheduled, the committee, meeting night, work session night for February the 18th. And then, we will get into March, March 18th. And then, more importantly, and I have talked to the chair, but March 24th, because of our health insurance renewal, we'll be making some of those decisions. We'll be talking about it a little bit early, but we will be working with the chairman's schedule and I know, hopefully, that's going to be a very busy time for him at that time. But, we'll be working with his schedule to make sure we have those recommendations for the health insurance in a timely manner. But, other than that, I'm just, I really just tried to highlight and, and prepare y'all for the upcoming meetings. If there's some other items that need to be discussed, again, I'll be trying to coordinate it with, you know, with, with the discussion we just had earlier by the committee actions that are going to be worked to discuss, so. I'll be glad to answer any questions at this time about anything else going on around town.
Any questions for Mark? Mark, would you mind just sharing with the group the discussion that you and I had with TexDOT about the signs in the city?
Last, thank you and I, and I apologize, last meeting you did ask for me to get with TexDOT officials and ask them when they had made plans to replace several of the signs at, primarily at the highway intersection signs. The city takes care of all the city streets, but it's their facilities and therefore, we're not allowed to get up on there. We buy the signs and, and then they put them in. Talking to TexDOT officials, they've eliminated a lot of their equipment, especially locally, and as well as some of those staffing now are coming out of Fort Worth. We are scheduled to have those signs completed and hopefully replaced, I believe it was by the end of March is what he had told us. And so, I am reporting back that that's what he had indicated to, to me and I believe he, he did make a phone call to you to confirm that same conversation, so.
All right, so, thank you for that, the work, Mark, you've done on that with Mr. Fowler and, you know, I think it's, I know it's frustrating for David, just talking to him that some of the things that he wishes he had the capability to do here in Steenville, he's got to reach you back to Fort Worth for some help, but, I'd just be glad when we see some, some signs that, that bring credit to the.
Yeah, you know, just, just so that, you know, I know there's a lot of folks that have asked, you know, we're talking about the Lingaville Highway sign, Lillian Street sign, if you go right in front of Tarleton, I think every one of those are faded. They probably are the signs when I was going to school back in the 70s and 80s. I mean, they're that faded, I understand, we understand that, they understand that. We, we, we bought those, we bought the equipment necessary to get those replaced. Harbin Drive, I think, has a couple that are of concern. Graham Street, several, several busy intersections, they're going to be trying to put those up on the traffic signals and I think those are the ones probably that most people are really noticing the most. And so, hopefully, we'll have those replaced soon. As far as just for y'all's information, we bought those actually last year for them to get this input, so those expenditures were in last year's budget, just for your information.
Okay. Anything else for Mark?
I have a quick question.
All right.
I noticed today that the Ollie-Washington street lights are now activated and you have told us in the past that we're going to be losing the Baxter-Washington intersection lights. Do you, have TexDOT told you what timeframe in which they're going to take those others down?
We, we're taking baby steps at working on all this and I'll just leave it at that. There's not a definitive date, but, you know, it is progressing and I did not know that it's fully activated at the end. It was just blinking last time I saw it.
It is activated today and if you've been avoiding that intersection and clogging up Harbin, try Ollie. The light works now.
Okay, then with that, then we'll move to comments by council members. Start with Mr. Hogan.
I have nothing, Mr. Mayor.
Dr. Cross?
No, nothing.
Mr. Svein?
I just want to say thank you to Walt and his staff for the good report, the audit. Being an unqualified report is a very good thing. He does a good job for the city of Steenville, I appreciate the hard work.
He's a good cameraman, too.
Yeah, he is. Other duties assigned.
Mr. McGanell?
Mayor, I had something I was going to say, but I forgot, so.
Okay, you can join Mr. McGanell.
You and Alan.
Next, next month.
That's right, they said gray and I think I'm nearly there.
All right, Mr. Pelton?
No report.
All right, Mr. Nix? Mr. Evans?
You know, I think Svein's color is higher. How could it be that dark in here? But, we're, we're the same age, how, how do we do?
Right living.
Don't go there, Walt.
Yeah. Okay, I'm, before I call us into executive session, there, there's one thing I wanted to, to say. You know, there, there's a lot of times that we in the council sit, sit here and we bring up things and we, we, we say, when is it going to get done? Why isn't it done? Why aren't you coordinating? What are you doing about this? And let's don't, let's don't take lightly the great work that I think has gone in to, for Mr. McGanell to be able to say what he did just a minute ago. The light is working at Ollie and Washington. And, you know, a year ago, looking back on that, there were people saying, well, that's two years down in the budget, it's not going to happen. And a lot of work by a lot of folks went into making that happen. So, you know, Mark, thanks for you and your staff for doing that. I know there's some council members that make some phone calls to Austin and, I mean, it's a team effort and I know we're going to be a safer place because of it and just, you know, good work by everybody. So, thanks. And with that, I will now call the council into executive session in compliance with the provisions of the Texas Open Meetings Law, subchapter D, Government Code, Vernon, Texas Codes annotated in accordance with section 551. I know y'all are listening to me. 72 deliberations about real property.